Like to call this meeting to order. This is the City of Southfield Planning Commission Study Meeting for April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, conducted via WebEx teleconference. We have a roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Culpepper.
Here.
Mr. Griffiths.
Here.
Mr. Huntington.
Present.
Mr. Martin.
Present.
Ms. Mia's excuse, Dr. Stevens Gunn.
Here.
And Mr. Willis.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum to conduct business this evening.
Thank you. First item on the agenda. Or actually may have a.
You may first want to accept the agenda or approve the agenda for tonight.
Great idea. May I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
To the Chair, Mr. Culpepper. I'm moved that we approved the agenda as written.
Support, this is Commissioner Willis.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Culpepper, supported by Commissioner Willis. We have a roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Culpepper.
Yes.
Mr. Huntington.
Support.
Mr. Martin.
Support.
Dr. Stevens Gunn.
Support.
Mr. Willis.
Support.
And Mr. Griffiths.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, you have approval for your agenda this evening.
Okay. First item is PZR ODD twenty-one dash zero 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 one.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This particular property has been before the Planning Commission a few times in the past. The most recent, two thousand and sixteen, with an overlay development district for the entire property. Property is located at two zero three zero zero Civic Center Drive. It's the location of the Arbor Lofts project. It's on the northwest corner of Civic Center Drive and Central Park Boulevard. The request this evening is to amend the existing two thousand and sixteen overlay development district development agreement to make some revisions, to allow for twenty-four units along Civic Center Drive, for the conversion of three existing carports to six units. That's two units per carport. Three new carport structures, an outdoor pet area, and up to thirty-six units on the northern portion of the property. So a little closer view of the property. The existing Arbor Lofts is the building here in the middle. The three existing carports are these three between the existing building and Civic Center Drive. Property is owned RC, again with an existing overlay development district development agreement, and future land use is city center sub area. So this is the proposal by the petitioner. If you recall, these units directly adjacent to Civic Center Drive were part of the existing overlay development district, as well as units on the north side. However, the new site plan or the new development agreement that the petitioner is seeking is to convert the existing three carports that I showed you right here into units, adding new carports both on the south side of the existing building and then on the north side of the existing building, and then up to thirty-six new units on the north side. And in a moment, you'll see the difference between the two thousand and sixteen and the two thousand and twenty-one proposal. Landscape plan. And this is the comparison. So on the left, you have the overlay development district from two thousand and sixteen that was approved. Again, it included all the units along Civic Center Drive, as well as a retail establishment on the corner of Central Park Boulevard and Civic Center. They did show the three existing carports. And then this was the layout for the townhouses at the time. If I recall, we're looking at almost seventy-two units, I believe, within. Maybe it's not seventy-two. Twenty-one, thirty-one, forty-one. Yeah, it's seventy-two units up here on the north side. By comparison, looking at the right-hand side, you can see the proposal to retain the units along Civic Center Drive. Until future time, as it becomes available, the retail space would be a small park. Again, the three carports become two units each, so two, four, six units, carports. And then thirty-six units on the north side. And again, the orientation has changed from majority going east-west, going north-south. Again, by comparison to what was approved before, in the two thousand and sixteen amendment, two hundred and seventy-six total parking spaces. The phase one of the development, so that was the existing building, was completed. Phase two included sixteen to twenty-four units. These are the ones that were along Civic Center Drive with shallow balcony. And then the rear portion, thirty-two to seventy-two units with shallow balconies. The typical unit size going from five hundred to a thousand square feet. The retail was sixteen hundred. The amenities included bike racks, benches, waste receptacles, outside gathering areas, and decorative walks. By comparison with the second amendment for two thousand and twenty-one, the parking goes down to two hundred and fifty-one spaces proposed, two forty-three required. It also includes the carports and the garage ports that I noted. With the multiple family, again, phase one completed. You still retain the twenty-four units with the shallow balconies. And again, the carport conversion to six apartments. And then the thirty-six units on the north side with the shallow balconies. Typical size would go from four hundred feet to eight hundred square feet. Retail portion, again, a corner pocket park for the time being until the retail became feasible. And then the amenities included bike racks, benches, waste receptacles, outside gathering, decorative walks, a new pet area, and then the pocket park, which is the one that's on the corner. These are the carport elevations. So these are the three existing carports that are south of the existing building. So these are the elevations. This is what those particular carports or those units would look like. This is a perspective looking west. Perspective looking southwest from the north portion of the property. You can see the carports that are being proposed, as well as the northern units. These are the three carports that are looking to be converted, as well as the units that are along Civic Center Drive. And then this is a perspective looking northwest from those units along Civic Center to those carport units. And perspective of the dog park. The small pocket park on the corner of Central Park Boulevard and Civic Center Drive. And then again, the overall overlay development district site plan. That kind of concludes staff's portion. We do have a number of representatives for this particular project. And I would ask Peter, whether it's you or one of your other representatives, if you could further explain or kind of fill in maybe some things that I may have missed or forgotten.
Thanks, Jeff. Thank you for hearing our case this afternoon or this evening. Jeff, you pretty much summarized everything. And I think there were some market changes that brought this to bear, including some things that the ownership has learned that they may need on the site, including the pet space, additional carports, and the pocket park. So, I mean, it's not much of a change. It's a little bit of a reorganization of some parts, maybe a reduction of density. But we're pretty close to wanting to move this thing forward. And basically, the bones are the same as when we came before you in the past. And, you know, with that, you know, we're open to questions. Mike Pizzola, landscape architect, he's really running the show in the office in terms of all the fine details and can jump in and answer any of those questions you might have.
Through the Chair, this is Planner Crowe. Before you go to the Commissioner, Peter or Mike. You talk about the timing, especially of the phase one along Civic Center. I know you're going to do six. And then what's the overall timing for the rest of development? And finally, what is your target market today?
Well, I mean, Terry, we're in the multi-family, you know, pretty deeply in the county. And it's market rate stuff. It's probably a move up from the lofts. The lofts are probably in the nineties in terms of vacancy rate. So we think that we're just going to move some people out of the lofts and into a slightly more independent spot with cars to park inside, pay a little bit more of a premium for that. But we think there's some demand. We know there's demand out there, but internally to our site, there's even demand. So the timing, you know, we'd have to talk with the ownership to know exactly when we pull the trigger. Already have a permit and engineering completed, or at least we're teetering on the edge if not have the permit for the first phase. So we could break ground as soon as now, basically.
Yeah, I just, I'm more aware of it than the Commissioners. So I wanted them to be aware of that you are moving forward with six units on Civic Center. I would imagine that would be in time this spring, summer. But what I was getting at is, is this targeted more towards young professionals, students, some couples or empty nesters? Some of the units are, these micro units are pretty small and already going to appeal to a certain type of group. So maybe you could just talk a little bit about that.
Okay, so, micro units are popular. I mean, I'm in the business myself, and I'll tell you, they're the first to go. They are the first to go. You know, a twelve-month lease on a micro unit, even if it's two dollars a square foot, pushes the limits of, you know, of the rent rate. It's still a lower rent. And they'll go fast. And the reason we put these in a few years ago, we had the vision, or GALL had the vision to put these micros in just from seeing the performance of Arbor Lofts and what was popular in the main building. It's hard to say. It's hard to say. Everything is pretty fluid. We see couples moving into micro units and we see singles moving into, you know, two beds. It's, you really can't define your user as easy as we thought we could. But we know there's demand for a new product on the market.
Well, through the Chair, you want to go to the Commission now? Thank you.
Before we do, can you just, for everybody's benefit, explain the micro units? Is that the four hundred square foot?
Yes, sir. I don't think any of them are actually four hundred square feet, but they're probably, if you include their closets and their mechanical rooms, they're closer to four seventy or four eighty. I know that when we originally put the ODD package together and it evolved into final construction documents, you know, those square footages moved around. But those are a single space, basically. It's an elongated space, so it's comfortable to have a bed in one part of the room, whether it's a Murphy bed or a fold-out bed into these new dressers that unfold into beds. It's a full kitchen and a living room, so it's not tiny. You know, but it is a micro unit. And those are provided with garage spaces, some common area in the garage space, independent staircases. So the stairs aren't included inside of these units. A lot of times when you get townhouses, you gotta push the stair inside. The stair is a common area. So if you really did common area calculations, they're well over five hundred square feet. But we leave all the common area outside of these calculations. So the interior unit space in the smallest unit, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, we just measured it was four seventy-five or something. But, yeah, they're good plans.
Four, between four and around, yeah. Depending on, you know, if you include closets and, you know, the front of the wall, the back of the wall. But yeah, it's about four. About four. See what I had before.
I think it was four. We just did, it was four sixty, but they're good units. Lots of windows, little balcony.
If I could, we're getting some echoes, so if you're not speaking, if you could put your mute button on, please.
Okay. Commission, questions, comments?
Commissioner Huntington, I have just a comment. Okay, I think rezoning request. Don't get an echo. The first unit, the first phase seemed to be going well. People seem to be satisfied. I think it's really great that they really follow the market and the market changes and not just stick to what they normally, you know, would do. I think the pet park is great. People really, really attach their pets nowadays and have a place designated for pets. I think it's going to be a great seller also. But I think overall, it does make sense, the rezoning. Thank you.
To the Chair, this is Commissioner Culpepper.
Yes.
Yeah, Mike and Peter, I definitely like this plan a lot better than I did the one in two thousand and sixteen. Glad that you're doing something on the front side of Civic Drive, because even with Arbor Lofts there now and your carport, it is a little dismal. It doesn't look that attractive. But what I'm seeing here with the addition of the promise and perfect landscaping, especially along that edge, I think this would be an added attraction to that corner. And again, I also agree that this need to be, oh, yeah, see? I mean, that is something. That will spruce that corner up because nice area, a lot of traffic, but just looking at it is better. So I like the landscaping. I like the units in the front and the back, because before we were just going with the back. And the only, I'm long with touring with, you know, your target market, you say you don't, oh, that's beautiful, that you don't know. And I understand that, because I've been to Lot Market and I talked to Mike Cattalozzo there. To me, it was a lot, at that time, a lot of college students. And I know you do have adults there, because you even had a Detroit Lions player standing there. But I like you having a multitude of uses. You got the, what you call the micro for a college student, and also you got families. But I really like the overall attraction that it would do to that corner. So I too am in accord with the rezoning. Thank you, Chair.
This is Geraldine Stevens Gunn to the Chair.
Yes.
Jeremy?
Go ahead, Geraldine. Too quick on the trigger on my mute button here. Go ahead.
All right, I just want to share that I think the units will provide an excellent opportunity for entry-level homeowners or residents in our community that hopefully will not only make residents there, but also to continue their residency when they're ready to move up to a bigger unit than the micros.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Rob Willis. Just curious, are there common areas where tenants could meet either inside or outside? I don't know, some type of assembly hall or something of that nature?
There is, in the main building, there is a common area. There's also a couple of tenants. There's a yoga, there's a yoga company in there. There's a gym. There's a large leasing office with common space for gatherings. So, yes, to answer your question, all the tenants of the site have access to the first floor of the main building.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Martin, any questions?
No questions for me at this time. I think it's an excellent idea and a nice way to expand the Arbor Lofts.
Okay, great. I think I'll have a few questions, comments. This is a really interesting development. I can't believe it was five years ago already that you were talking about the last plan. That's a little scary to me, how fast time's moving. The garage ports, I think, are interesting. Is that, that's literally keeping the roof in the carport? And I think they're kind of cantilevered carports now. And then I assume you're just building the walls underneath them?
That's correct. That's correct. So the new strip footings and light gauge metal walls will close in the carport or the structure, the roof structure. But considering their ceiling height, there was no reason to demolish those, to add more of the other buildings. We thought it wiser to have a ground floor unit, more of an accessible type of unit. Those are all two-bedroom units as well. They'll be universal design. Some proportion of them would be a Type A unit. So it's for a single level lifestyle. And I think it adds to the kind of the array of products that the site will offer.
Yeah, I think that's a really interesting unit. And I think it's a good look to mix things up. Just overall with this project, I think it's really bringing a large variety of housing options. And we've talked many times of how there's a lack of housing options in the city. There's either old high-rise apartment buildings or very large lots. And it's one of the good things, there's still going to be a lot of large lot, single family, and there's still going to be a lot of high-rises. And this is right in the middle of everything. I live right in this area, so I ride my bike around here all the time, walk past here. This is really interesting, current housing or future housing that we really need to compete with some of the other cities around here, I think. I think it's, I really like the design style. I think it complements the existing building, which was a nice conversion from an office that was pretty dated. So I'm looking forward to having more density in the area. And I think that helps everything that's already been started around here with the restaurants and some of the other newer developments. So I'm completely in favor of this. I think this is really exciting.
Mr. Griffiths, if I can, through the Chair.
Yeah.
I do know that we have Cynthia Bernoudy from Five Thousand Town Square in the board on the line. Not sure, sir, if you would be willing to take a comment or a question from her.
Yeah, I think that'd be important to hear.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for letting me be in on this conversation. I've been across the street from the Arbor Lofts, actually, before they were built. I've been here about twenty years. And I see it also as a plus as well. And kudos to you for keeping in, you know, in compliance or keeping ahead of the market change. Everything does change, and I'm glad you're, you know, moving in that direction. The only question that I wanted to know was in reference to the pet area. Will that be just for those who are living there, or will outsiders be able to walk their pets there?
I haven't had that discussion previously, but since the building is pet-friendly, I would assume that it's for the tenants.
Well, that's what I would have said. I just wondered if there'll be a way so that outsiders won't.
I don't know. I wouldn't make that claim at this stage. I don't think it's very big, but it's an amenity that people have asked for that live there.
Oh, I think it's a wonderful amenity.
Yeah, I think it would be more of a liability if you were to open that up to the general public. I think it's more intended just for the residents only, being that it's small in size and, you know, directly adjacent to the building. I would defer to the development team in the future, but I think that would make no sense to keep that a private park.
Agree, I agree. I wanted to bring that question out there, so you have, you know, be thinking about it.
And, you know, to kind of address that, you know, signage could be posted, you know, for residents only, you know, in a nice professional way of sorts, probably, with the best pets to keep that, you know, for the residents only.
Well, thank you for all of this. I've enjoyed listening to it. It's unfortunate that we have to handle business this way, but it's nothing.
The Chair, Commissioner Martin. Commissioner Martin? Yes.
I understand that you're saying that the pet park is because there's no retail business at this time. What do you plan on doing for pets if you get retail business that wants there?
Well, the pet park is not in the same location as the pocket park. So the pocket park would be public, or to some degree, public. But the pet park, the fenced-in dog area would be private. So when we get retail on the corner, the pocket park would just be taken out.
Through the Chair, this is Planner Crowe.
Go ahead, Terry.
Want to make a few comments. I am a dog owner, have a couple of dogs, actually, and we belong to a dog park. But we have to provide license and shots to get access to it, and it's key fobbed. And there's an annual permit. So I would imagine that the building management would require something similar for the tenants so that even though it might be a good gesture to let the public use it, it probably wouldn't be a good idea, because you couldn't control whether or not dogs had their shots, ravy shots, and were licensed. So I would recommend, Peter, that you guys have some type of control gate with a fob or other code that is for residents only. I too am excited about the diversity of units on this site and offering different housing options. I've been vetted with this project for, seems like, close to the ten years I've been here. It just shows you how overparked we were. And I know Chairman Griffiths has said this before. If you could fit this much development on what was otherwise required for parking and still have more than enough parking, that just tells you how overparked we were. And even though we're building more, we're actually creating more impervious surface with the green spaces being introduced. What I really think is going to be transformative, and I'm really excited about, is this first. is this first phase of these townhomes on Civic Center because it's going to start to establish the street wall that um, we've we've been hoping to create. And knowing intimately the plans for Ever Center, which has um, mixed use retail with some housing. These two projects are really going to complement each other and feed into all the the pedestrian amenities that we've been working on. And coincidentally, the city center is investing a lot of money in freshing up Central Park Boulevard and the old Central Park Plaza, which was first established in 1992. And so you'll see some subtle but uh, interesting upgrades. We have new art feature that's going to be established there. The board, um, the city center board, just this past Tuesday, approved decorative lighting that will be gone, um, be up year round that can be controlled electronically to change um, light colors. We have some additional planters and landscaping that's going to be installed there. And we are working on some pavilion structures. Knowing that this this project is moving forward as well as potentially Ever Center to really create a pedestrian connected corridor. Uh, and I just want to remind everybody that um, this has gone through several iterations. And really what we're doing is approving the amendments, allowing for this reconfiguration, reduction of units and different variety of units as opposed to creating a brand new ODD, Overlay Development District. So it's it's a modification of what was previously approved in many ways. This is, it's probably a better plan, in my opinion, because of
Much better.
But um, the one last thing I'll ask the development team, and again, I know it's all market driven. But in an ideal world, what is your phasing for um, for for building this thing out? So Peter or Mike?
Yeah, it would be just, it would be north then south. Or I'm sorry, south then north, it wouldn't be any, there wouldn't be more multiple phases. But the the question we have procedurally and since we're in a study session is that there's some discussion of of potentially modifying some of the garage space offerings and lowering some of the units in the future to potentially two story prototypes instead of three on the north end. And we want to know, because we're kind of still studying the market, that let's say 18 months from now, we want to get permits for the for the north portion. Is there any flexibility in the ODD without going through the process of having a few of those units be two stories tall instead of three?
Well, Peter, the best way to do that, and that's the flexibility of the ODD, is in those development regulations, establish a low and a high range. So you would say, uh, two story, three story, and maybe you say 24 units to 32 units at your various sizes for that north portion. And then that gives us the flexibility that if market changes and you come in, then we could just approve things administratively as opposed to going through this whole process. So if you think that the four three story buildings that are 32 units could be two three story and two two story and maybe 24 to 32 units, that's what you should encapsulate in our ODD regulations.
Okay, thank you.
To the Chair, just Commissioner Culpepper.
Yes.
Uh, got a question. Uh, Jeff, will you put up the uh, the park area on the screen, please?
I'm sorry, which one, sir?
The park.
Okay.
And this is a no, 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 that's
Dog park and the pocket park.
Oh, the park?
The pocket park.
The park, okay.
The corner park and the dog park.
Pocket park, not the
The dog park.
Yep, not the dog park, right there, look, uh, listen to what Commissioner Martin said about if uh, you go to retail. Help me with this, you said if you go to retail, what you would do, would you would take this area out? Or did I misunderstood what you said?
Yeah, through the chair to Mr. Culpepper, that that corner was originally approved for a 1600 square foot retail or a coffee shop?
Understandable, number 216, Terry.
Yeah, what they're saying is that in until there's a market demand for retail, this will be developed as a pocket park.
Okay, pocket park, but really the place hold that you're doing, what you're saying?
Yeah, and it, uh, the retail may never materialize, but until then, at least, instead of just leaving it the way it is, they're going to create this pocket park.
Okay.
So that it still gives them the flexibility in the future if there's demand. I may, maybe it's half of that park is just a coffee shop or a pop up business and the rest stays green. But they have the ability to build up to 1600 square feet retail.
Understandable, just hate to lose that area. To me, that's the, that's another seller, okay.
If 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 I could chime in real fast on that, I I don't have the original renderings, Terry, um, from the original retail, you know, back in 2006. But I do recall that whole corner would be opened up to the um, to the street from the retail. So there will still be patio areas and, you know, outdoor spaces more towards a sidewalk areas, but um,
Yeah, there was
Exactly, exactly, right in there. Um, which will still be available to the public if that ever were to go to retail. But until then, um, it's just a, you know, a holy pattern, you know, for the, I've I've been to that corner as well and yeah, a a tree would look nice there.
Right, I, yeah, I remember from 216, if if the uh, retail was on the first floor, you still had that uh, open area out there to be like, not like a park, but a good little nice scenario area, so I remember that. But uh, that pocket park really is a seller, okay, just want to verify, thank you, thank you Chair.
Thanks. And I guess it's maybe a preview, but I've I've heard rumors or seen previous designs for the adjacent development. And, you know, there's a mix of retail or there, that's mostly retail with a mix of residential. This is obviously highly uh, residential development with some existing retail, you know, the yoga space, things like that in the existing building. I think, you know, if I had to predict the future, I don't think this retail would ever get built and it would be great, the pocket park would make sense. But if if there's so many people in this area someday that a 1600 square foot retail space is justified when there's all the other developments around it, hopefully those are built as well, I think that's a good problem for all of us staff. So I think it's, it's it's a good, you know, it's a good mix of all the developments around there, different uses, bringing in some residential, keeping the commercial. It's, there's really a lot going on, which is what would I always, what I think we should have in the city center district. I think it's, that's that's the goal for the the mixed use center of a city. I think it's a win win either way. Any other comments from staff or commission?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if there's nothing more from uh, from the commission, um, if you're satisfied uh, with tonight's presentation, uh, then no need to bring it back, um, we can just uh, have them come back on the 28th for the regular meeting.
Uh, works for me, I didn't hear any real concerns from anybody else.
No, I'm good with it, it sounds good to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good with the Commissioner Huntington.
Yeah, Planner Crowe, just, um, I suggest that that the developer team, Peter and Mike, just set up a quick video conference with my planning teams, just so we, we can um, be on the same page with your highs and lows as far as building height and square footage. So we don't, we get to the approval, we got it all locked in, okay? Thanks.
Yes, yes, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good job, Mike, good job.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
All right, thanks, everybody. All right, next item is number two, PZRRUDD19-0001.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so you can see by the uh, the date on this um, PZRRUDD, uh, this is from a couple of years ago. Um, this is the McKinley School, uh, on George Washington, 10 Mile Road area, uh, the vacant school that um, the proposal is to use the school uh, for residential units, uh, to ba- basically refurb- refurbish it. Uh, and then the potential for future construction of additional units. Um, property is located at 18330 George Washington, uh, on the nor- on the northeast corner of George Washington and Continental. Property currently zoned R4, single family residential. This is a closer look at the the existing property. Um, so the school building itself is over here on the west side, adjacent to Addison. Uh, the other building is temporary classrooms, uh, those would be removed. Uh, and then obviously the existing building would remain. Uh, one thing that we wanted to focus on, at least, um, direct the the planning commissioners to uh, had to do with the the conditions and the development standards and requirements for residential unit development districts. So like we do with the the special land uses, um, these are the five standards that when it comes to an RUDD uh, that the planning commission needs to focus on. Uh, conformance with residential unit development concept. If I may, just for a moment here, let me mute somebody. Um, compatibility with adjacent uses such as architectural integrity, height, setbacks, density, parking, circulation, green infrastructure, landscaping views and other design and layout features. Um, access to to major thoroughfares, estimated traffic to be generated, proximity in relation to intersections, uh, adequacy of driver sight distances, uh, and so on. You can see items eight through eight there. Uh, in addition, protection of natural environment, compatibility with the future land use plan, and then compliance with the applicable reg- regulations. And the property is currently zoned, single family residential, R4. And I'm going to have to mute someone again. Um, R4, single family residential with the future land use map showing moderate density, single family. This is the proposal uh, for the site plan. Again, the refurbishment of the of the McKinley School for condominiums, uh, as well as garages on the north side. This area really has not changed. It was the east area of the property that has. Um, originally, it was a completely different design on the east side. Um, the petitioner has come back with duplexes. And so there are 11 duplexes shown for a total of 22 units. There are actually three different types of duplexes, uh, with various elevations, and I'll show those shortly. Landscape plan. And again, this would be a phased project, phase one would be the repurposing of McKinley School. The eastern half of the property would have all the remote classrooms, structures, hard surfaces all removed. And that area would be fine graded and seeded for land, for landscape for the time being. So the McKinley School itself with the elevation. And then these are the three duplex types uh, that are being proposed for the east area of the site. Uh, duplex number one, number two, and number three. And again, there would be 11 of these units on the east side, should they be developed. This is looking from Washington, Washington, uh, George Washington Drive, looking north. So you see the school on the left hand side of the image and then one of the uh, the duplex units, townhouse units here. So looking south uh, from Continental Street, so these would be the garages and then the refurbished school beyond. And then the interior uh, of McKinley School itself, uh, the common room, living rooms for you, for the units. And with that, I do know that we have uh, John Abella online, uh, who is with the the petitioner. Uh, and John, if you could just uh, add some additional things, if there's something I've forgotten or further explain the project, we'd appreciate that.
Good evening, everyone, thank you, Jeff. Good evening, everyone. Uh, yeah, really, Jeff covered it all quite thoroughly. Really, the the crux of the of the petition is to change the eastern portion of the of the site to these 11 family units. The mayor doesn't like us to call them duplexes. So we're looking at these and what it does, it offers less, less density, a more residential feel, if you will. I mean, even the elevations of the uh, du- duplex units, and we really were, were trying to keep them in scale with not only the school, but obviously with the with the neighborhood. They range in size from about 1800 square feet to just a shade over 2000 square feet. Each, each duplex has its own uh, two car garage attached, obviously. Um, you know, again, tried to keep with the spirit of the school with the with the aesthetic nature of the of the of the duplexes as well. And, you know, even even trying to come close to, you know, tying in the brick and 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 some of the detailing to kind of reflect the kind of American Tudor, I mean, updated, but still American Tudor feel. Keeping the scale down as much as possible and also just trying to be a good neighbor, frankly.
Is that it, John?
Yeah, thank you, Jeffrey.
Okay.
What what was the uh, previous unit mix? I forget, I know, since we just compared the last project.
Yeah, yeah, McKinley stayed, the the school portion stayed stayed the same. The the other, I believe it was 47 townhouses we had on there. So they were basically, you know, you see how we have a pair of duplex or a duplex and then a space in between. Imagine that kind of all all filled in, if you will. The units were between, I think, 1500 and 1800 square feet each. So there was more density on the site. Same, same kind of proportion and and same same about elevation as well, very, very similar.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, would it be advantageous to to have a slide showing what the previous uh, east side of the property looked like?
I I seem to remember a lot of concern from the neighborhood, uh, which seems to be addressed in my first glance glance at this. But uh, it, I don't think that would hurt.
Okay, we'll make sure that happens.
Yeah, excellent idea, uh, this Commissioner Culpepper, excellent idea, going from 47 townhouses down to 11 units with duplexes, that's a big improvement and big uh, difference. I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, that would be a good idea to show those previous slides from uh, two or three years ago, thank you.
And then I I believe the previous project was all rental units, is this determined yet if this is, or sorry, the previous Arborlofts development was all rentals? Would, do you, have you determined yet if this is rental or for sale?
This is, this is for sale at 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 market rate.
Excellent, thank you, all right. Um, anything further or we'll open up to the commission?
Please.
Okay, commissioners, questions or comments?
The Chair, this is Tony Martin. I believe that this resolves quite a bit of the parking issues. People in the initial presentation two years ago, they were talking about the number of cars coming in and out and having the attached garages and reducing the number of potentially uh, parking spaces that would be used within the complex is a great improvement. I think this looks a lot better and a lot nicer and something that the uh, residents would accept a lot easier than uh, the volume that was there before. I think it's a good chance.
Thank you, Commissioner.
To the Chair.
Yes, Steve.
Uh, Commissioner Huntington?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, by actually saying this neighborhood, I know there's a lot of concern about, you know, additional traffic and how people going through neighborhoods, but uh, this new setup, I think, is much, much better. I think the fact that it's not just rental property, uh, homeowners, that makes all the difference in the world. And I think what you're building in addition to uh, the condos is gonna really actually increase the value of the neighborhood. Right now, it looks pretty bad over there and it's been looking bad for a while. Right now, it looks pretty bad over there, and it's been looking bad for a while. When we had the school over there, there's a lot of traffic, a lot of people rushing and driving crazy, and, you know, I think this is gonna be a much, much better situation. Thank you. That's all I have right now.
To the chair, Commissioner Culpepper?
Yes. Go ahead, Commissioner Culpepper.
Yeah, John, I want to thank you for going back, looking at the previous proposal, going from 47 townhouses down to 11 duplexes. As we said previously, that was a big ask for the neighbors to even consider that in that space. So, let me compliment you on this new proposal. I think it looks good, and I agree with the other commissioners that you're not gonna get 100% buy-in regardless, but this is much more feasible for the residents to live in that area. Who, as Commissioner Huntington said, concerned about the value of their property going down, this, to me, will enhance it. And again, that area is terrible. I mean, it looks desolate in a bit that way sometimes. So, with this project, I think would be a big enhancement. And my final note is, when this thing gets started, you need to get with your HOAs over there, your homeowners association, you need to make sure that the neighbors are involved and have input and know what's going on, and listen to them, because this is a big concern. And I heard you say you want to be a good neighbor. So, this is not your first rodeo, so you know what you're gonna go through, but to get the buy-in and support from your neighbors and keeping transparent with them, and letting them know what the proposals are, and look at any ideas they come up with that could help the process, would be a great attribute. But overall, I agree with this, it's outstanding, great improvement, and great job. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner.
This is Geraldine Stevens-Gunn to the chair.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Stevens-Gunn.
I have a question. What is the timeline on implementation?
Well, once we achieve site plan approval, there are several things that have to happen first. One is that the east side, where the temporary schooling units are, that has to be demolished, razed, cleaned up, and then the school itself has to be abated, right? Some of that old material has got to come out. And then, we'll start construction on the west side for, so the adaptive reuse school will be the first phase. And as that's going through, we'll get the infrastructure in for the duplexes, and then once phase one is complete, we can move over to phase two to complete the duplexes.
This is Geraldine again. So, when are you looking at getting started?
Once we have site plan approval. Hopefully, soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Rob Willis.
Hang on one second. Commissioner Martin, I believe you are next.
I'm sorry about that, Commissioner.
That's all right. I just, I think Terry mentioned it, or Jeff mentioned it, but I think it would be a good idea to show the change from the prior plans that were reviewed two years ago. If I remember correctly, there was a big issue with the parking along the front, along George Washington, or access and entrance and exit for parking. It would be a good idea to show the changes, so that residents can see that this is a great improvement, and something that they should be a lot more willing to accept. Thank you.
Understood, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Willis?
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Willis.
Thank you. Let me co-sign the couple of previous commissioners. I remember well the number of neighborhood, number of neighbors who are interested in this project. I think they toured the school with us, they attended several meetings with us. I think it's imperative to touch base with them, but I think they'll love the program, they'll love the layout once they see it. My concern is with parking. I love the pattern of parking. I'm looking at where you are indicating handicap parking, and, one, it seems a little bit, seems like they're placed because the symmetry looks good, but not near where you would have a flow of... And I'm sure, and secondly, and this may be a little bit picky, the house that's on the extreme, I think it's east, southeast corner, seems to not have parking near it. And I don't know if there's a parking requirement that needs to be out the front door, it just seems to have parking a long way from it.
As you stated, we took a lot of advice from the community meetings that we have, because we originally proposed parking along George Washington Avenue, but we got a lot of resistance to that. So, that was removed. And then, we tried to concentrate the parking on the main thoroughfare. Also, each unit, as you know, has attached garage within it. You know, I don't disagree that some of that public parking is far away from that corner, but, you know, we did create sidewalks, and hopefully, a walkable community as well.
Okay, thanks.
To the chair, Commissioner Culpepper?
Yes.
John, a very important fact, that I definitely know you need to run in with the neighbors. Construction, your equipment, that was one of the questions that came up a couple of years ago, about equipment coming in, tearing up the street and neighborhood. So, hope you got a good plan on how you're gonna bring in your heavy equipment when you start tearing down, and also rebuilding. Where the trucks would enter, where they would exit, and if any of the pavement and that thing is torn up within the neighborhood, you have a plan there for the neighbors to let them know what you plan on doing. Also, if the equipment, after use, if the equipment will remain on property, or would the equipment be taken away? So, that's an important area that I think needs to be addressed, because there will be noise, there will be work from, in certain hours, that you're gonna have heavy equipment in that neighborhood, and there will be some destruction or noise in the neighborhood. So, just please keep that in mind. Thank you, Chair.
Understood, sir. Thank you. Just to note that all of the equipment will be on-site, none of it will be in the public right-of-ways. All of the construction will occur on-site.
Okay. Is that all, Commissioner?
This is Geraldine Stevens-Gunn. I have one more question.
Go ahead, Gerald.
Okay, on George Washington, just past the playground area, is almost toward the end of the property, the playground area on George Washington, there are two beautiful oak trees. Are you planning to save them?
Yes, yes. We have a tree survey, and we've demarcated which trees of a particular caliber, and I can't recall the exact caliber, but yes, we have a tree survey, and we're gonna maintain as many of the trees as possible. I don't think you have it in there, Jeff.
I'm just, I'm looking to see if I have an aerial photo. Yeah, it's, they're probably down here along George Washington, it's just it's kind of shaded out because of the right-of-way.
That is correct.
Yeah, it looks like they're in the public right-of-way. I've got that tree survey on my other screen.
Yep. So, they're right in this area over here.
Yes. Well, I think this is a really exciting project. I really liked it, the last version, and this is definitely, this is a really nice, really nice improvement, I think, reducing the density. I think it addresses a lot of those neighborhood concerns, and quite honestly, these are gonna be the highest-end houses around here for a fair amount of distance, which I'm excited for as well. This is out my window behind me, I can see this. I drive by this site every day, I don't know, 10 different times.
Do residents get to speak on this call?
Can't wait to, I see. The attached garages are a must. We just saw a rental project that has garages, and these are gonna be high-end for-sale units, so the large garages are great. I think the opportunity to live in a historic school, but still be able to keep your motorcycle and your canoe and all your stuff in a garage on-site within a short walk is a rare opportunity for people. That's gonna be really nice. And then, with the duplexes, the kind of the historic look and quality of them, but you have the modern amenities of just park inside and walk right in your back door, I think is gonna be the real nice mix for everybody. So, I'm very excited about this. Like I said, I see this building many times a day, and I think it's gonna be a great improvement for everybody, and it's really interesting. We see a modern development, that's completely different style than this, and this a very historically expired development. They're within a mile of each other, and I think it's a great mix of everything. So, as I said before, I really like it. It's, this is a definite improvement. You know, the schools, the schools around here, I live near a school, it's really busy and really frustrating, and, well, it used to be. Not so much this year, it's been very quiet. Now, I want to see people at the school, but this is gonna be, this is really not a lot of people on a large amount of land, and it is pretty calm. You have to remember, Southfield Road is just a couple hundred feet away. There's busyness that's very near here, and it's not necessarily through this site or through this street. Not a lot, at least. So, I'm very excited for it. I think it's a religious design.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I do know that we have a number of people online, probably from the neighborhood, and again, like with the other project, if you might want to take some questions from the residents in that particular area.
I think that's fair. With all these virtual meetings, I think it's, if someone cares enough to come on to this, we should hear what they have to say.
Okay, so...
So, are you gonna let them on one at a time, or...
I have one name here of Anthony. Well, let me do this. If there's someone who would like to speak, you can go ahead and do that at the moment, and then we'll just kind of go down the line.
Chair, Commissioner Martin?
Before we do, if we do have a resident that wishes to speak, just make sure to identify your name and your address for the record, please. Go ahead, Commissioner Martin.
If I remember correctly, the first set of plans we did a couple of years ago had a play area for kids, or was that something that we just discussed and the possibility of?
I believe that we just discussed that. It was brought up, but it was never commissioned to go ahead.
Thank you. Is that something you're considering? Or you would consider?
We are, part of the issue is that we have to get the snow removal plan to work, and we have several green areas where we are gonna need to put snow when the time comes. There is ample green space to make it friendly and open, but we have not discussed putting a playscape back in to the development at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, do we have a public caller? I heard somebody a few minutes ago, but...
Yeah, I'd like to speak if I can.
Okay, please give your name and address for the record.
Just give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Bruce Morris. Address, 1-8581, Capital Drive.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, we had voiced some concern about this a couple of years ago, and I appreciate the changes that have been made. I disagree with the fact that the majority of the neighbors in that neighborhood would be for that. I would ask that the planning commission get the input, the majority up for the neighborhood as opposed to one or two residents that may live near there, or may not even live there, or live close to that school, before you decide to make the change. I don't agree with the statement that it would improve the value of our houses by putting in condos or duplexes. I don't see how that's going to improve the value of our houses there, where we have single-family homes. So, that's one thing I do disagree with. I see, if anything, that that will decrease the value of our homes. I disagree with the statement that was made about the neighborhood looking bad. I think our neighborhood looks pretty decent compared to other neighborhoods in the Southfield area. I will agree that the school, something needs to be done with the school. And as I had voiced before, that if we were given the chance to have a park in our neighborhood, that that would be an ideal location for a park, something that you would see similar into the Birmingham area. But again, I say, you know, before it's signed off and moved forward, that at least the neighbors and the neighborhood get a chance to have input. And that the role, that the planning commission actually considers the neighbors and their concerns, as opposed to thinking what's good for whoever owns this building, and the potential for it to be a moneymaker for them. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any other public callers? Any other comments from staff on this item?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I mean, the only, like with the previous project, if you believe that this is ready to move forward to April 28th, then there's no need to bring this back for any further study.
Commission, any concerns about bringing this back before the last meeting?
To the chair, Commissioner Culpepper?
Yes.
No, I don't have any concerns. I'd just like to make a statement for clarification. The statement that was made about the neighborhood, and I think it's a beautiful neighborhood, the conversation about, I mean, the statement that was made was concerning the school area, the school being closed, and how that area looked, and this is, to me, is what this was saying around, that school area, not the neighborhood within itself. So, I just want to clear it up. I think the neighborhood is beautiful, but the sole purpose of this was about the area that's around the school. So, that is what I was saying when looking back. So, just to clarify, no debate, just a clarification. Thank you. I'm in our favor of moving this forward. Thank you.
Yeah, it's obviously a very unique neighborhood with many custom homes. There's some that are not maintained to the level they were when they're new, which is, that's the beauty of new construction. It's gonna be all-new, which is why it's so much more valuable than existing construction, and it costs so much more to produce it, which, that was the statement about, I predict these will be some of the most valuable homes around the area. There's a very big lack of new construction housing in the area, and the associated value with it. All right, thank you. If you're satisfied, Jeff, I think we're good to bring this back at the end of the month.
Okay. All right. Then with that, we can move on to the next item.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Thank you. Next item, PSP 21-0005.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, this is the truck light project, or now called Clarient, on the corner of Northwestern Highway and Civic Center Drive. Property 20600 Civic Center, again, northeast corner, you can see the property in red. Current zoning is RC, Regional Center. And the site plan review request is for approval to increase the square footage of the building totaling 49,017 gross square feet, and require land bank parking spaces. This is a little closer look at the property. You can see, this is a 2020 aerial photo, so we do see the building under construction. Actually, the property, you know, over the last couple of years or so, is pretty much fully developed with parking spaces and landscaping and so on. Property is zoned RC, Regional Center. Property is owned RC Regional Center, as I noted. And then this is the the proposal for the site plan. As I noted, when this project originally got approved, it got approved for 40,000 square feet of area in the building. What had actually happened is this project continued to go through its process. Um, it went from what was a one-floor building to a two-floor building. And what that did was that expanded the existing square footage within the building that then required additional parking spaces. So really, what the petitioner is here again for this evening is to get the increase in the square footage, but also to provide for the additional parking spaces that were required due to the existing or the new square footage that was added to the building. So the the new parking spaces would be land banks. Uh, they're not needed at the moment, but they are shown as if in the future, should they ever need to be put in, uh, that they could put these parking spaces in along the north side of the property. This is what was a previously approved plan for this particular site. This was the the one-story portion of the previous proposal. So this is just the one floor at the 40,000 square feet. And then this is the new floor plan, the first floor plan, which is very similar to uh, what was proposed before. And then this second floor plan, the second level, which increased the square footage of the building.
Jeff?
Yeah.
If you could, can you go back two slides? I so I I want to clarify that you you can see that there's, um, there was some small, uh, there were some some small additions. I believe the footprint was about 25,000 square feet. There was a smaller second story that got built out. So the the footprint itself changed very slightly from what was approved. It was more of interior space was built out. And I know representative from from the contractor is is on and can clarify. Uh, and it's really a technical approval at this point because the as-built was around 49,000 square feet. And as Mr. Spence had indicated, that triggered additional parking that they don't feel they need. We want to discourage having impervious surface if we don't need it. So, um, I just want to make sure that everyone's clear that in essence, it it really was additional second story built out and a small increase in the original footprint. Thanks, Jeff.
Yep. So as I had noted, um, original footprint, first floor and then the second floor, rendering of the of the structure itself. And then again, the the overall site plan, showing the square footage within the building at over 49,000 square feet, and then the proposed land bank parking spaces on the north side. And with that, that completes staff's comments at the moment. I do know that we have numerous members of the of the team online for Clarient. Uh, so whether it's Nicholas, whether it's you or one of your associates, if you could further explain the project or fill in anything that I may have missed.
Happily, Jeff, and thanks for the setup. And Terry, you you said it perfectly. You know, this was not a a one-story project ever. Specifically, you know, if you look at the drip line, the building envelope, that grew 355 square feet only. So the 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 drip line grew very in a very small way to basically to comprise a storage room that came later after the site plan process. Now, the the additional space to make the 49,000 was because of a a two-story demonstration area that was much larger than they needed. So they decided within the drip line to kind of encroach in on that two-story area to make it more usable square footage for the building. Okay? So, you know, listen, we all feel a little silly about this. I know I've talked to Terry about it. He's been generous with his time on this issue. We I feel like everything was done with best intentions, but yes, the building did grow, the footprint footprint did grow, uh, and it never got back channeled back to to you folks, and we want to make that right. Now, the leadership absolutely loves the building. They they appreciate everything that Southfield has done. Terry's office has been great, and and I can elaborate, but I'll just say that. And we do not feel the additional parking is necessary. We prefer the green space. Uh, I'm in the process of 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 working with the CEO right now to do an enhanced landscape plan. Um, I've worked with Terry's office. We've we believe, although we I'll relieve, I'll leave it to to his office to to chime in, that we've met the expectations for landscaping. Aside from some soil stabilization that still needs to happen. Uh, that said, uh, I'll be meeting with the CEO shortly, adding some additional greenery and green spaces that because that's what they like to do. Uh, if they get into a position where they need the parking space, we've land banked it. We we land banked some with you folks initially, and we'll do it again. Well, meaning, we're we're only asking for a commencement amount of additional land banking to to make it right. And if they need it, we will work with you folks to put it in. But for now, we'd rather have the the grass and the trees. That's all. I'll just I'll just add again, if you've been by the site, it's a very handsome building, an attractive site. As Nick indicated, there's just some final landscape grading and seeding that they couldn't do in the winter. Uh, our preference being green and sustainable is to have less parking than more, and we have a provision in our ordinance that allows for land banking should the need come in the future. And really, again, this is really a a technical cleanup of the original approval from 40,000 to 49,000, mostly inside. And as Nick had indicated, only 355 square feet of the building footprint changed. And normally, I would be able to do this administratively within within what the ordinance allows, except for the parking. And that's why we're just taking it together through the site plan process. And will we have to answer any questions that the commission may have at this time?
This is Geraldine Stevens. Gun to the chair.
Go ahead.
Okay, Jeremy, I'm assuming I can go ahead. Okay. Um, I would like to say share that this was one of the first projects as a new planning commissioner that I got to to see and be a part of. I ride by there. I walk through there. It is absolutely gorgeous. And the only thing I can say is that because we haven't been invited to come in and have lunch or or on a personal tour is because of COVID, but I can't wait. Uh, I think it's a beautiful project, and I'm very proud of the work that was done.
Well, Ms. Geraldine, I might be able to accommodate that. How about how about we give that some thought?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
This is Commissioner Rob Willis. Uh, just like to know, how many employees do you anticipate working in the building?
Well, I, uh, so I I am a consultant of theirs. Um, you know, we moved them in last November, and they're they're under, they probably moved in with 50, and they're slowly creeping towards 100. There are whole areas of the building that we we just haven't put the workstations in because they didn't want to incur that cost, but the place is looking great. I I do know that they want to fill it, but they're just not there, right? They've they've built it out to hire. They built it out to acquire talent. Um, they built it out to be have a great synergy with L T U. Uh, but yeah, I guess I'm dancing around your question. I I don't know exactly the headcount they're up to today. I could probably provide that to Terry's folks if if you'd like.
Okay. Just curious about capacity, but thanks.
Chair, Mr. Martin?
Yeah, Commissioner Martin, go ahead.
I just, how many parking spaces do you need to land bank now with the additional space, square footage?
Boy, you had to ask. Jeff, that might have been on your slide. I'm I'm sorry, I don't have that.
Yeah, no, that's okay. It's 38. 38 spaces are being land banked. They're required to have 186 with the 38 land bank to have 190.
It does seem like it's something that would be better to go through an administrative review than they have to go back before the commission. But thank you very much.
Thanks. Any any other comments?
Commissioner Huntington to the chair.
Yes.
I think the land bank is a very useful tool. I think this is a perfect situation for it. Of course, the greenery will look a lot better than unused parking. So I just wanted to say that I think the the land banking is a a good idea. And this we zoning, everything fits right in. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, this is is a really nice looking building of, like I've said three other times previously, I'm in this area all the time. So I was able to ride by it a lot on my bike during construction when there was nothing else going on, and it's it's a really nice looking development. Um, the landscaping already is looking great. It's a big improvement to that corner. So no problem. One of these things that does seem excessive to bring through planning commission approval again, but that's the process. So here we are. Uh, thank you, though. Uh, any other comments from staff?
Well, Mr. Chairman, again, as we did with the other two projects, I'm not sure if there's anyone online from the public who would like to to talk on this particular So if there's someone from the public, if you could give your name and address for the record, and then you can follow through. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it doesn't seem like anyone has any additional comments on this project.
Okay.
And if if I could just make a final statement again, explaining why it's coming to the planning commission. The additional square footage, it was within the 10% or 10,000 square feet or 25% that that I can do administratively. However, I cannot approve a plan administratively if a waiver is required. And since they're short on parking, without the land bank approved by council, they would need a waiver. And I don't have the ability to approve land banking. And that's maybe something I should bring up with with council in the future. And and it's for that reason that it has to go through the process. So it's, again, it's we're bound by what the the regulations allow me to do administratively versus versus site plan going through planning commission and council. But I can tell you, at least this makes it transparent. And as as Nick had said, there's good intentions. But 49,000 square feet were built, and we got to make sure that the plans reflect it. We don't want somebody 10, 20 years from now coming back and seeing that plans were approved for 40,000 square feet and find out it's a 49,000 square foot building, and there's no paper trail. But other than that, it's really a technicality in in my opinion. So we'll see you in two weeks, Nick. Hey, yes, sir. And just a quick thought, you know, this is Roger Penske affiliated company. Everyone's excited to have him down. The the guys that are the leadership of this building are just all first rate. And, you know, we want this place to look great. So you you have my commitment, and and I think I speak for them, too. It's gonna it's gonna look great for you.
Hello? Excuse me. Hello?
Yes.
Hi, I have a comment on the McKinney project.
Uh, very briefly, please state your name and address for the record. This, we've moved past that, but.
I know we moved past, but we were told to call in, and no one's been able to call in on the 796 5150 number. And that's why there were no comments, but there are many comments. We're very concerned about the McKinley project. We need to have a traffic study. I understand you did.
First, please state your name and address for the record.
Betty Smith, 18611 Capital Drive. We're right down the street from the school. We would like to see the changes. We would like to see the changes, and we still need a traffic study because the the streets aren't wide enough to accommodate three cars. And when people visit their friends and families who's going to be moving down into the new location, they're going to park on the street. And when you park on the street, they're going to park on both sides of the street, and you're not going to be able to get down the street because the streets are too narrow. Are there plans to widen the streets in this area to accommodate that? Has anyone done a traffic study? Do we have a chance to even see what the new plans look like?
If if I could through the chair, I I'd like to be able to release Nick and and send him off on this with this site plan. We do have one more site plan after this, and then we have our public comments section. And just just to the caller, we do have a public hearing scheduled in two weeks, and we we are open to receive comments from the public. You'll have an ability to review the plans between now and then, and and we'll be happy to work with you. But I I I think it's a little bit unfair on this particular case and the next petitioner to hold them up. And then we, at the end of the meeting, we we have our public comments, and we'll be happy to entertain them. So through the chair, if we could, send Nick on his way and close out this this phase. We've got one more case to go through, and then we can open it up to public comments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Terry. Thanks, Nick.
Yeah, thanks, Terry. Thanks.
It's end of the month. All right. Next on the agenda, then, we have PSP 21-0006.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so this is a property located on the northeast corner of Southfield Road, Northwestern Highway, in Nine Mile Road. You can see it's the property that's shown in red here. Uh, property is 18,000 West Nine Mile Road. Uh, and the site planner view request is to construct a 100,000 gross square foot multipurpose athletic facility dome on the green space, which is directly to the east of the existing multi-story building. So this is a little closer look. So this particular green space, again, east of the building, along Nine Mile Road, is the proposed location for this particular use. Property is owned RC Regional Center. And this is the site plan that we have to date. Uh, I am still awaiting revised site plans from the petitioner, and the petitioner is aware that I need those. So tonight's meeting is is really more or less just to kind of give you kind of an overview of the project itself, allow him to make a a small presentation, and then maybe get some questions from the commissioners. Um, really, it's I'm unsure right now whether or not this one is going to be coming to you on the 28th. It all depends on getting all my revised plans back. But this is the proposed location for the for the dome. And with that, I'm going to turn this over to Amar. And Amar, just let me know when you want me to advance slides, and I can do that for you. So you're free to to go ahead with your presentation.
Hey, guys, I also have Neil here, who will be operating the facility as well. So he'll he'll go through the slide deck, and I'm here to answer any questions regarding our partnership with them, I guess, as the building owner.
Thank you, Amar. If you would like to go.
Thank you, Amar. If you would like to go ahead, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. If you could go ahead and click ahead to, uh, slide two. Um, the concept being, uh, teams in the area need a place to go ahead and train and, uh, and use throughout the, throughout the year, but particularly the week, fall, winter and spring months to train. And what we know is that there's a hotbed of athletes in the, excuse me, in southeast Michigan, uh, that participate in baseball, um, soccer, youth football and lacrosse. Um, yet in the area, there is not a new facility that is, um, with proper, proper turf that can house, um, that can house during the winter months. So the concept here is to go ahead and put up a multi-sport facility that will be approximately thirty thousand square feet of grass turf or a field turf. Twenty-two thousand of that would be specifically for sport, um, for baseball diamond, like you can see here on the left. Um, be also used for soccer, flag football, have a training facility in there as well with weights. Um, and then batting cages that would be able to be rented out, uh, on the half hour, hour, but welcoming in teams from all over the area, um, which has been, you know, from, uh, the community colleges, Lawrence Tech. From Southfield, we've talked to some of the, some of the sports organizations, Bloomfield Hills, Franklin. Um, all with interest being within the fifteen to twenty minute range, driving range to come and use the facility. You wanna go ahead and click to the next one? Uh, that was the, you know, aerial of the, of the location and go ahead and click again. One more. This would be the lay, the proposed layout as it stands right now. But within here, we would be able to have two field turfs that are u- utilized for, um, for any of the sports, along with rentable cages, weight room. And then in through the vestibule, you'll see the restrooms in there as well. Um, so there's dialogue happening as to whether or not those would be in or we would have a, you know, how many, um, within. But the idea being is that this would be the proposed layout, uh, for the facility. All netting, security cameras, um, would all be in there as well for athletes. Go ahead and click again. Um, this would be the, this is the dome actually, uh, and what the look is. So it's thirty thousand square feet and then it would measure at top, uh, fifty, uh, fifty, uh, feet high. You know, um, and then if you wanna go ahead and click again. Just a side view of it, rendering. Go ahead, one more. You know, so based on, um, based on discussions we've had with teams, this will be an, an operational, uh, seven days a week. Proposing a seven AM, Lawrence Tech in particular has asked for morning time slots to be able to utilize the facility all the way through ten PM. We know the busy time of the facility will be in that one-thirty till probably around eight o'clock at night. Uh, when youth sports and training happens specifically after school. Um, great opportunity in there for, uh, for revenue opportunities. And then uses, uses of the facility would be team rentals, training, group training, private coaching, speed and agility, weight, uh, training, um, sport evaluations for leagues. Um, and then also being able to do day camps and/or community, um, type events as well within the facility. If you wanna go ahead and jump again. Um, teams that we've talked with or organizations that we've talked with, so you're bringing kids, as we mentioned, from Southfield, uh, Birmingham, Bloomfield Hills, Berkeley, um, North Farmington, Rochester, and then, uh, the Southfield Public Schools and the list continues to grow. So, uh, very, very, uh, exciting opportunity to have something new where people can go and utilize with the top of the line turf and also weight training facility. Go ahead again. Um, Amar, do you wanna jump in and talk about this as, as the overall with the building?
Yeah, um, so, uh, in regard, I mean, as far as the parking lot you're, you're talking about, Neil?
Yeah, parking and security and everything.
Sure. So, um, actually just recently, we, we've, we've actually had a number of issues with, um, with vandalism at the property and, uh, there's actually been a, for vandalism cases in the area. Uh, so as far as security, um, I think the dome is a great addition, um, which, which is bringing a lot of eyes in the area. Um, and then as far as the parking lot itself, we, uh, we are getting ready to redo that parking lot. And then we talked to, uh, the condo association adjacent to us. And, uh, we talked about blocking off those two entrances because they didn't want all that traffic coming through, uh, that road, uh, right, right next to the property here. Um, so as far as that, we've talked to them, uh, regarding security concerns and traffic concerns and both of those were addressed last week. Um, if there's any further questions on that, I'm happy to address.
Any thoughts on the timeline, gentlemen? I have the timeline, uh.
Uh, Jeff, it, it's Neil again. I mean, I would say we're, we're, obviously we owe you some materials as well right now.
Right.
Um, based on the, on the previous comments and we'll get those to you as quickly as possible. I, I believe we're, you know, the, the bubble is ready to be, uh, shipped down to, to us. Uh, and we're working on the rest of the plans. Uh, but our, our plan would be to be operational, uh, and, and ready to go in September for teams to start utilizing the facility is obviously we never know what weather will be like in the fall. Uh, and teams are definitely interested in getting in there and starting to train your rock.
I, um, this is Planner Crowe. You are correct. We're still waiting on some, um, details that we'll need to receive by early next week. Otherwise, we're gonna have to postpone, um, any action at the end of the month. Um, but I, I did wanna just bring up our requirement of an eighteen inch to three foot knee wall of durable material around the dome. Uh, and, um, hopefully that you can address and accommodate that. And I also wanna recognize Al Sevis, the DDA director. Uh, this, uh, project is located within the Downtown Development Authority District and, uh, he might have a couple of comments to share prior to us, uh, opening it up to the planning commission. So through the chair, could we, uh, recognize Mr. Sevis, please? Thank you.
Yes, uh, go ahead, Al.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chairman. Is that better? Cam, everyone?
Yeah, you're good, Al. We can hear you.
Okay. Um, March of, uh, I can't through, um. Nope. All right. Uh, as long as you're not getting a bounce back on my voice. I'm getting one internally. Uh, March twenty-sixth of this year, the DDA board unanimously approve moving the project forward. Uh, we felt that the project, uh, would, would meet a couple of different requirements for us. First of all, this property has been vacant for at least eleven years. It's a difficult property in a sense that is not easily accessible uh, because of a lack of, uh, exit off of the freeway. In order to actually get to it, you need to loop around by Providence Hospital and, uh, drive going west on Nine Mile to actually receive it. Uh, second of all, one of the main components that we have been missing is an afternoon population. We desperately need to have individuals who are coming from outside of the city so that it can assist whatever retail operation that the DDA currently has. We feel that retail will follow the population as opposed to population following the retail. Um, with the current plans at Northland, we think that this proposal, as well as the Northland proposal, will be key to the future, uh, development within the DDA. So we're very excited about them. We think that it's a good use for the property and we hope that the, uh, commission will look favor prob- favorably upon this at its next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, staff, any more comments or we ready for the commission?
Uh, not at this time, sir.
Okay. Uh, commission questions or comments?
To the chair, this Commissioner Call Pepper?
Yes.
To Al and to the petitioner, I got one word. Outstanding. Outstanding. This is something that the city has needed and wanted for a long, long time to have this type of activity in the center. And to the petitioner, you done your homework upfront by looking at what the neighbors would say or might have an issue with. And you've addressed that early in the process. So this is what a good neighbor looks like. So all I can say is outstanding job and I wish you the best of luck because you have my support one hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Geraldine Stevens. Go on.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, and looking at, uh, the tentative proposal, are you going to be able to accommodate, uh, female, uh, athletes at the same time that you accommodate male athletes in this facility?
Absolutely, yes.
That was short. Can you show me the locker rooms or, cause I didn't see, I wasn't able to a- ascertain that on your drawings?
Yeah, so the, i- in the front, um, currently in that drawing right there over to the left by reception and check-in, there are two restroom locations within. We're trying not to use the ins, the, the dome per se, um, for locker room purposes. Uh, cause most of the youth will come to sporting, to sport for trials or, excuse me, for practice already, uh, already suited up for that. But there would be separate restrooms. If that's something we need to explore, obviously we can.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, this is Commissioner Rob Willis. Um, along the same veins, do you have, um, accommodation for, uh, persons with physical limitations other than a wheelchair ramp so that they can get to weight room or do any other kinds of things as available?
Inside the dome, it's all flat in there. Um, so there wouldn't be, inside, there wouldn't be ramps or areas at which, um, that we've, that we've, uh, explored that would have an issue with, uh, with wheelchair or other disabilities getting to. Um, but we, we can look into that absolutely.
Okay, because I would think, uh, issues like spacing, the kinds of weight that you would have if you would, um, you know, just, just other kinds of things that I'm not sure if I can imagine right now. But, uh, I think there's some, you need to take a look at, uh, accommodations for people with physical limitations.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment.
For baseball training. Oh. Hello? Hello, can anybody hear me?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Okay, um, is this mainly geared for baseball training?
No, it would be base for, it would be based on all of, uh, the major sports. So it would be football, soccer, lacrosse, um, in there as well and softball as well.
Okay.
So basketball.
Okay, so do you have, uh, like special equipment for, to, to handle air quality inside the dome?
So part of the dome, part of the air filtration system is actually on the right-hand side, you can see there's an in and outtake valve that's with, on there for, um, for the filtration of the dome.
Okay.
So that will circulate air constantly throughout the day.
Okay, thank you. I think it's a well-needed, uh, project here in Southfield. Yeah, I think you can get a whole lot of business. So, uh, hopefully everything worked out for you. And, uh, you know, hopefully it's safe inside. Hopefully that air is moving like it should move inside and, and filtered, you know, properly.
Yep.
I know it's not the easiest thing in the world to do, but, uh, I know it can be done. So good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
To the Chair, Commissioner Martin. This is an air-filled dome, correct? And I assume that it has to be rated to take certain, uh, wind velocities, uh, snowfalls, rain. Can you tell me, or what type of specifications it has for that?
I don't have these specifications handy with me to be able to discuss it. I can tell you this, this, this dome, um, is, has been used in Ironwood, Michigan. It's one year old. Um, so the sw- the, the, uh, wind and snow loads would be significantly more than we'll see in Southfield. Uh, there's a tremendous amount of steel within the structure of the facility as well that would be able to withstand, um, what we're gonna see here in southeast Michigan. It's an Asadi dome. And I don't know if that, if that will help at all, answer your question, uh, but we can get that information for you.
The, uh, the airflow system, I assume is electrical?
Yes.
Generated by, and you have a backup generator for that in case of power failure? I'm thinking of the, uh, uh, collapsing of it. I know, uh, the Northwest Activity Center in Detroit had some problems when the electricity failed and the dome would collapse. And individuals would sometimes be in there.
Yes, there will be a generator as part of the, uh, as part of the setup, yes, an emergency backup.
Far as the, uh, facility goes, uh, what type of staffing uh, would you have and, uh, I assume they would be trained for, uh, emergency evacuation in case of something like that?
Yes. So we're currently evaluating the staffing requirements that we'll, that we'll have. Um, depending upon the time of day, there'll be different levels of that. Because with some of the teams, depending upon, they'll have their own, they'll have their staff that will come in for training. Uh, but I would imagine at least on our side, there will be a minimum of five people depending upon the amount of people that are using, utilizing the facility at any time that are trained in CPR, uh, in medical, uh, emergency. Or if, you know, a, a player or athlete was to get hurt, uh, we would be able to treat them as well. Or at least to stabilize them to wait for, uh, the emergency services to come.
As far, why? Well, I assume that the dome is well, well, yeah, I guess the lighting is it within this, built within the structure itself of the dome?
Yes. So it's LED, it's LED lit. Um, I don't think within this picture there are, or within any of the pictures that are within the presentation, we have, uh, the models that are suspended from the, the roof within. Um, Anthony, do you know by chance, uh, offhand, how many lights are within? I don't recall, uh, right offhand.
Uh, my guess would be around, um, forty to fifty fixtures lined up on a grid on the interior of the dome.
Talked about parking, s- uh, security. Uh, what type of, uh, security are you talking about for that?
Uh, so we already have twenty-four-seven security at the building. Uh, we're in the process of, uh, installing cameras all the way across the property to the point where, uh, you can follow a car across the parking lot, uh, especially due to the recent vandalism. Uh, it's funny because we actually ordered, uh, these cameras, uh, a little over a month ago. And had we received them, we would have, uh, been able to keep the recent vandalism at bay. But everything's a little slow with COVID. But, uh, nonetheless, we'll be able to read every license plate that comes in. Uh, we have, uh, nighttime. Uh, we have, uh, nighttime guard service now in the parking lot as well. Um, they've been patrolling the last few days ever since this happened. Um, so we've beefed us, beefed up security already quite a bit. Um, and I think that should be more than sufficient for the activity going on here. Not to mention that the type of traffic this dome will drive will already be a huge deterrent to any sort of illicit activity.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I just want to add anecdotally, um, many of you know I'm a Syracuse University grad. Carrier Dome was constructed in 1980 and they had inflated roof that, uh, lasted 40 years. They just replaced that roof. So, um, I'm very familiar with this type of construction. And if, if the Carrier Dome can handle the snow load in Syracuse up to 200 inches of snow a year, I'm sure these, um, these new domes can, can handle the, the snow load here in Southfield. But, uh, that will all be reviewed by the building department and the fire marshal before there are any permits are issued. And I would strongly encourage the development team to reach out to the building official Mark Pilot and his staff. Because this is slightly, uh, unusual building for them. They might need some extra lead time, uh, during their review process. And they will give you comments on, um, based on your capacity on the size of restrooms and fire suppression you may or may not need. Again, I strongly encourage you, if you haven't already, to reach out to, uh, the building department and fire marshal elbow as you go through our review process. Thank you.
Yeah, now my daughter's been playing travel softball the last couple of years. So I've got the pleasure of going inside many of these domes. Um, none as close as this one would be to home, so that would be nice. Um, she plays out of the St. Joe's Sports Dome on, um, at Schoolcraft College on 275, which is a great facility, brand new. I'm guessing that's a little larger than this one, but, uh, four teams from our organization practice at the same time. Uh, we're there on Sunday nights, a lot of times all through the winter, we just finished up. Um, it is, it's very interesting. It's, there's a lot of cars, there's a big turnover of one team leaving, the next team coming in. But it looks like this, this parking is, is plenty sized to handle it. And we've only been on the, the off-hours and weekends, I assume, to get the, the price affordable for our teams. But it's, it's a good, um, it's a good use to fill in the off-hours and, and, you know, not compete with the office traffic necessarily. So it's, I, I know I've definitely had, um, clients, uh, talk to me about doing some indoor sports training facilities in Southfield inside of existing buildings, much smaller than this. And, and talking about the, the lack of available facilities in this area. Uh, I think it's gonna be a, I think it's a good fit and a good location. It's, it's one of those destination areas too where you, you have to go there so you figure out how to get to the exit and drive around and, and do all the things. So it's, it's a good use for the site. I'm excited for this one as well.
Um, the only other comment, um, through the chair again, um, they owe us some drawings. And we asked the planning commission to defer to us next week if we, uh, if we feel that they'll be ready for the 28th. And we will, uh, we're, we're gonna do everything we can to try to accommodate them because they, they have a short timeline. But, uh, they gotta give us the, uh, information in a timely manner for us to review and then share with you. Uh, the only other issue I'd like to bring up is, again, being a baseball coach and traveling tournaments 12 years, is the, uh, drop-off area, drop-off and pickup. A lot of parents will be shuffling kids and then going and doing errands and then coming back in two hours. So I'd, I'd like to see a, a closer detail on the drop-off pickup area to the main entrance. Other than that, uh, I don't have any other further comments. Thank you.
Yeah, and this is Commissioner Willis. I too am good, um, I think it's a great project. I look forward to it. And I am curious, um, to, um, to, for the answer to Commissioner Gunn's, uh, concern with women, uh, accommodation and make sure we have accommodation for, uh, people with physical limits. Um, so I look forward to hearing, uh, hearing from them with that.
Oh, I, I was gonna just tell you my experience with 12-year-old daughter. And we usually follow, it seems like, a bunch of, uh, boys or older teenager soccer teams. Um, and that's at Schoolcraft College, like I said. So that building actually has a small cafe, usually one staff person running a front desk. The bathrooms are not that large, maybe, maybe four or five fixtures each. And it is one of those things where you come dressed, you do your thing. You won't, it's, they're very strict on the turnovers between the hourly timing and everything like that. So there's not really, there's not time to change and do all the things. You go do your thing and you leave and, and come outside. But there's, the building code dictates how many rest, restrooms are required based on square footage and occupants and all those types of things. So it's, um, because of the air, they always have traditionally the, uh, revolving doors. And there is a handicap accessible doors that swing when needed. But for the most part, it's, it's a completely level building, like they said. And that, that dome that I go to all the time is less than two years old, I would think. So I'd expect all the same typical amenities and features. And there's, there's emergency exit doors, a, a bunch of them all around the perimeter of the inside of the dome. That you, you know, if there's an emergency, they don't care about all the air dropping out of the building temporarily.
If, if I may, Mr. Chairman, um, if I could ask a question of Mr. Sevis?
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Uh, Al, what, what's the current occupancy of the office building? I mean, how, how full is that building right now? And I'm just looking at parking, um, because obviously as, as we get into the use of this dome, should this be approved? And there could be some interaction between office and, and those using it. Cause they are looking at 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Um, so what's the occupancy of the office building right now?
Jeff, I'm gonna turn it over to Mark since he's the owner.
Hey Jeff, um, so right now, um, just, uh, over the course of, uh, this past year, even during COVID, we've leased up about 60,000 feet at the building. So we're, uh, just about 70% occupied in the building now. Um, as far as parking, we have, uh, almost a five to, uh, five to 1,000 square foot ratio there. Um, so there, there's more than enough adequate parking. So, uh, the thought was that we would dedicate that parking lot that's right in front of the dome, um, to that dome. And then there's still plenty of parking remaining, uh, for, for the building, uh, office users.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, that we had some idea of, of occupancy and what you're using right now and potential use of parking spaces. Just to make sure that we had enough to, to support this use should it go in. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Uh, so as far as the, um, required drawings, you'll, you'll work with the applicant to determine if they're ready in time?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so, um, if there's nothing further, uh, next item, got the PZTA 21-0003.
Yes, so we do have a text amendment we'd like to bring for, uh, forward, uh, to you for a couple of items. Um, the first would be, um, non-conforming um, uses and sites within the city itself. Uh, revising the zoning ordinance, um, to, to amend a couple of the articles to clarify what a non-conforming use is, um, and, and provide a definition. Uh, also, we're looking at amending Article 4 for signs and lighting, um, by adding commercial building to Section 5.22-4, so it, it would say signs and commercial building lighting. Uh, adding, uh, a new section 5.22-41 for exterior lighting and glare, uh, to provide standards for lighting and protections for adjacent properties from glare. And that's a result of some complaints that, that we've, uh, begun to receive, uh, from some sites um, that, uh, have, have put in lighting on properties that have basically caused, caused issues, uh, to the neighbors. So this is, these are the, the sections themselves. And it, I, I won't necessarily go through every single word. Um, but again, um, the definition for what a non-conforming site is. Um, and then, um, what a non-conforming site shall be discontinued uh, for the purpose of this section if the building located is not legally occupied. Basically what we're saying is if, if there's a particular use that's non-conforming and that after a year, there's a, there is not been, uh, a, a new conforming use within that building, that you can't continue that non-conformity. Uh, Article 4, Section 5.31, this was within the parking standards. Uh, we talked about proper illumination for security of property and safety of persons. And there's a section for adding commercial building and lighting. And then finally, uh, what I noted with regard to exterior lighting and glare. And again, adding, uh, a number of conditions, um, and standards here, uh, for, for lighting and glare. And again, trying to, um, control that or, or screen that from, from adjacent properties.
Yeah, and, and if I, if I can, uh, join in, um, we do require lighting to be shielded and directed downward. And we, we've had some limited success at commercial buildings. We, we approve a plan and then they go ahead and put, um, put additional lighting up and don't follow those rules. And some of that spills onto adjacent, uh, neighborhoods residential. But actually, uh, what we've been getting a lot of complaints are, are residential of a residential. And residents are purchasing commercial grade floodlights and installing them on the back of the residence and then keeping the lights on all night. And that's causing a lot of glare and light pollution to their adjacent property owners. And there's really nothing on the books that specifically addresses residential lighting glare to other residents. So this is our, our first attempt to try to provide a little more uh, regulations so that the code, codes department has something better to enforce. And Jeff, I, I'm just looking at this real quickly and it doesn't specifically say anything about residents.
Residential?
Yeah. I want to make sure that, uh, that, uh, this is just not focused on, on, uh, commercial lighting, but, uh, addressing the concerns that we've been receiving from residents. So this, this got a little work to do, but, uh, we wanted to introduce the topic tonight. And as Mr. Spence has indicated, we've had some policies on non-conforming, uh, uses and when they go out of, when they go out of business and another, uh, use wants to come in there. Uh, and I felt that, uh, we needed to beef up our non-conforming uh, section of the ordinance specifically, uh, on, on sites and, and, and when uses elapse. So with that, we behalf of any, any questions that you may have.
To the Chair Commissioner Martin. I do believe we need to stress, uh, the lighting for residential houses. Just as an example, I have a neighbor across the street, three houses down. And at night, when their floodlight comes on, the front of my house is lit up like a Christmas tree. And because the bedrooms are in the front, it also lights up the bedroom. And that's disturbing. Uh, I know this people have, uh, I have personally, I have ring floodlights in the backyard that come on and they can be set for distances and the, in the site area. And I made sure that mine don't go past my property line so that I'm not interfering with the neighbors behind me. And that's something that residents need to be aware of and that needs to be able to be enforced so that, uh, people aren't disturbed by their overload of lights from their neighbors or other residents within their community. And I would believe that, that needs to be included in the articles and, uh, a method for reinforcement. Because at the present, no enforcement's not out at night to see that their, uh, lights are flooding the areas. And it's something that is a waste of time for police to have to police. So that needs to have some method to, uh, of enforcement. Thank you.
Hi, this is Commissioner Rob Willis.
Yes.
Uh, Terry, a couple of things. One, I think the language, no adverse effect on adjacent properties. I have no idea what that could mean. I am so glad this language is being canceled that, um, you, you would at least have an idea what is an adverse, adverse effect. Um, because that is so subjective. But I do think the language could be included to add, uh, lumens and distance. Um, I could be angry because my neighbor put on a light bulb and just say that it's giving me an adverse effect or it's disturbing me. So I think, I think some definition with the amount of light and distance might be included. Yeah, just an idea.
Yes, um, this, this really is a work in progress. And we, we try to get it, um, get it on with our non-conforming uses, text amendments, a- and it may not be ready for prime time. But, uh, since, uh, this is a discussion, we want to get these comments in. And, uh, we've done some preliminary review of other communities. Um, but, uh, we, we still have some work to do on, on the residential lighting, uh, aspect. And, you know, back in the day, people used to be neighborly. That's number one. Uh, and now I think with all the, uh, home improvement stores and the market that you have access to these commercial grade lights, uh, they, they've popped up. Now here's the real challenge. When you don't have something on the books, uh, and, and you now establish it, anything that pre-existed that doesn't meet those requirements then becomes a legal non-conforming uh, situation. And it's the job of the community to take an inventory of all those non-conforming situations. And can you imagine, uh, how many homes, uh, are violating what, uh, we're trying to do? Um, and we need to maybe have a discussion with the attorney's office about sunsetting some of these, uh, lights so that we can, um, say you can keep them up for a year, six months, a year, and then you'll have to remove them and comply. Yeah, similar to what, uh, some communities have to do with billboards. So there, there's still a lot of work to be done on this. But, uh, we wanted to at least, um, get it in front of you and, and start getting some feedback. But, uh, so far, everything is right on point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? I'll just say lighting is such a tough, subjective. It's such a tight threshold. Do you have to have a certain amount, especially commercial properties? You have to have a certain minimum, but can't exceed a maximum. It's so tough to get it dialed in. And then, like you said, they probably install different lights half the time anyway. So it's, it's a tough one to enforce, very subjective, kind of like traffic is. Mainly the, very similar to the subjectiveness of traffic. All right, um, next on the agenda, we have the public comments.
Yep, um, so I do know that we do have, uh, members of the public online. Um, and we would ask that, again, you give us your name and address for the record. And then you'll have three minutes to make your comment. And, uh, again, for, for those who might be listening online and have yet to dial in, um, we ask that you call 1-415-655-0001. And then when prompted, add in the event code 129-127-3581. And with that, um, again, I do know that we have people who would like to, uh, to speak.
And if, if I could, this is Planner Croden. We will listen to, um, the public that calls in. Everyone will have three minutes. But, um, it's important if you have concerns or comments to participate in the public hearing in two weeks where your comments will become official. And/or you can submit a letter or an email to the planning department up to 5:00 PM the day of the public hearing. I also want to encourage the public to go on to the city's website, the planning department homepage. And we have all of the active cases on our interactive map. You can look where you live, uh, or a particular site. You can click on it and you can see colorized, uh, photos and eleva- uh, elevations of the site plan and the buildings are being proposed. Short of that, you can contact our office between the, um, between tomorrow during office hours and next week. And we can assist you with reviewing those plans online. and we can assist you with reviewing those plans online. And with that, uh, again, uh, when you're recognized by the Chair, please give your name and your address before speaking. And let's be respective of each other's comments and try to keep it to three minutes. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Jeff, you said you have someone in, someone that called in already?
I have four people on the attendee list, and I do know that we uh, had one resident who, who began to speak earlier. Uh, she lives on Capital with regard to the McKinley School Project. So I, I'm perfectly fine if we start out with, with her.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Thank you. My name is Geddes Betty Smith, one eight six one one Capital Drive. And we are still, there are some concerns about the McKinley Project. First, we're concerned with the density, the number of people that the families that are gonna be living in the project in such a small area. And we also concerned, we would like to see a traffic study. We have not seen that, and we would just like to be able to also come together and see the drawing. I understand we can go online, and I will go online, and I will advise others to go online to see the actual layout and what is proposed, but I still think there's, there's a lot of units, I think we're down to four, forty units. And to, to me and to many of um, my neighbors, that's a concern. It is still a concern. Thank you, and I will do everything that you suggested uh, to the Chair. I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Next, Jeff.
Um, I guess, uh, if there's anyone else who would like to speak, uh, this is your opportunity. Uh, please give your name and address for the record, and then you can go ahead and proceed with your comments.
My name is Devon Owens. My address is one eight seven two five Capital Drive. And I'm also concerned about the McKinley Project with the traffic and the actual number of units that are gonna be there. Um, and again, I will also email and do as you advise, and also um, be a part of the meeting on the twenty-eighth.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else who would like to speak on uh, during the public comment?
Yes. My name is John Oden. I live at one eight six one one Capital Drive. Um, I'm concerned about the McKinley Project, um, uh, the way it was put together and the, the uh, Southfield Renewal Corporation being, having all their addresses going to the city, to the city, um, the civic center. Not knowing who they are, where they live, they, they act, they, they're really acting like they're part of the city. And it's a lot of, I think it's, it's not good for people really not to know what's really going on. I think probably three quarters of your board members think that the Southfield Renewal Corporation is part of the city. And it's not, it's a, it's like a private nonprofit. But that's, you know, people have to investigate to see how things are done. So they'll get the real understanding of how, how um, things work. People do, do projects for their own interests, not the interest of the community. I just wanna state that to the, for the record. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak during the public comment? Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it looks like uh, we don't have anyone else who would like to speak at this time.
Sounds like the, the density question keeps coming up of, maybe we should ask the petitioner to divide the total units by the total acres and see how that compares to the adjacent single-family houses?
And Mr. Griffith, um, we completely missed what you had to say, you, uh, we can't even hear you, barely hear you.
Uh, I, I'll repeat it, Jeff, uh, he said that um, since uh, the density issue keeps coming up, it would be good to know what the density per acre is on the proposed development versus the density per acre and the surrounding neighborhood. And I believe that was also uh, an email that I, I sent as a question to be answered prior to the public hearing. And I got a thumbs up, so I think I, I uh, I got it on point from the Chair.
Okay, good.
Yep, my, my headphones have died, it must be too long of a meeting. Uh, we have any, um, next we have the meeting minutes?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chairman, we do have three sets of meeting minutes. Uh, I will send those to you prior to your regular meeting. Uh, those are the minutes for March third, March tenth, and March twenty-fourth.
And any miscellaneous items?
Uh, I don't have anything other than to say that i- it doesn't sound like we will be meeting on April twenty-first. Uh, so we will cancel that meeting, uh, and then we will come back uh, as a group, as a commission for the regular meeting on April twenty-eighth.
And I'll just add that uh, um, we're just uh, closed out the public comment period from the master plan. We are, we are tabulating those results. So I would imagine that we will meet in May during our long, long-range study session just to focus on the master plan. Other than that, you guys have a good night, be safe.
Uh, to the Chair? Commissioner Culpepper, I, I'd like to make one comment. I'd just like to uh, compliment uh, Terry and the Plan Department. Terry uh, gave a great presentation Monday to the uh, council. He uh, told them about the CIP. Uh, it was uh, enthused, they, they accepted it, they thought we did a great job. Also, his second presentation, I thought, was very enlightening to not only the uh, the council, but to resident to listen in, of talked about what the city looked like previously, especially Evergreen Road, to what the improvements that the council, I'm sorry, that the Plan Department, along with the commission, had done. So I just wanna say to uh, to the commissioners, that the Plan Department did an outstanding job on the presentation, and uh, from the enthusiasm and from the comments that came from the council, uh, both of those uh, presentations were outstanding, so produce to the department and also to everybody involved. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Culpepper, uh, I have hope that uh, at a future long-range study session and possibly the one in May, we can take fifteen or twenty minutes and I can uh, do a recap for the commission, but uh, thank you for your comments.
Yeah, no, great job, very, very enlightening. Thank you. Thanks, thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
All right, meeting adjourned, see you in two weeks.
All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Good evening, everyone.